Please rise if you wish for the invocation and the pledge. Dear God, tonight we will wrap up the budgeting process for the coming year. We are grateful for the many hours staff has worked on this in the last six months. We are thankful too for the collaborative process of the council and city manager in reaching the point where our needs and critical initiatives are covered for the coming year, while continuing to carefully watch what taxes accrue to our residents and the property owners to fund these. We recognize we live in a time when finances are tight for many households and some businesses are finding their operating environment challenging. Helping, help us to remain vigilant as the year unfolds, looking for ways we can reduce spending when such opportunities arise and finding funds outside the tax base as they become available. As we consider the matters before us this evening grant us wisdom, knowledge, and understanding that we may make the best decisions for those who have entrusted us to represent them. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is a special city council meeting for the month of September. City Clerk, would you do the roll call?
Councilmember Sell?
Here.
Councilmember Papalardo?
Here.
Councilmember Stevenson?
Here.
Mayor Shazey?
Here.
Vice Mayor Butlin?
Here.
This evening's agenda, you will note, has two public hearings preceding the consent agenda. This is by state statute. We're at the time in the budget year where the highest priority for the meeting must be the millage rate and the budget final adoptions. So, city manager, the city manager, item number one, the city manager is requesting city council adopt resolution number 2025-15 to set the final millage rate of 3.6500 for the levy of ad valorem tax for the fiscal year 2025 to 2026. The final millage rate of 3.6500 is 10.82% above the computed rollback rate of 3.2935. City Attorney, would you read resolution number 2025-15?
Yes, Mayor. Resolution of the City of DeBarry, Volusia County, Florida, adopting a final millage rate for the levy of ad valorem taxes for the fiscal year 2025 to 2026 on all taxable property located within the city of DeBarry, Florida.
Thank you. City Manager, are you doing the presentation?
Yes, Mayor. And council, again, this is our fourth time going through this, so I'll stay pretty high level. And we will show you, there's been a couple of adjustments since inside the budget, not the millage rate, inside the budget, where we did finally get some revenue estimates from the state agencies there. So, just again, here's our particular process. We started this on July the 11th. Staff is obviously working on the budget way before then, but we presented it to council on July the 11th, and tonight is the final millage and budget. We talked about our ad valorem history over the last 31 years. We began at 2.83 mils. We're recommending 3.65 mils, and it's a remarkable record that our millage rate has gone up less than one mil over the last 31 years. Our favorite slide, this shows our ad valorem rate compared to all of our West Volusia partners. And as you can see, we're 41 or 42% less than the City of Deland, 46% less than Deltona and Orange City. And even when you add our stormwater fees in there, our, if you have an average house of a taxable value of $199,857, your city taxes are 40 or 50% less than everybody else. You can see there 500 or more than $500 savings with the same house as in other cities. We talked about our forecasting over time. We're expecting our city is 98% residentially built out. We're, our commercial, a lot of our commercials in process. We expect that once the commercial comes in, you'll see a trickle down on the ad valorem. And obviously, on the right-hand side, you can see the ad valorem rates for all the cities in the city of DeBarry. We're the lowest millage rate in all of Volusia County by far. And of course, our West Volusia Markets Partners, you can see they're down in yellow. We're nearly half of their ad valorem rate in their West Volusia Partners. We talked about the 3% increase for our personnel, and on the right there, you can see the survey for the other cities. We talked about the public safety, and this is where our largest increases are. But the city of DeBarry is the safest city in central Florida by far, and we do it through a contract of services with the Sheriff Department. Just in last month's comp stat report, their clearance rate of 88% of all their cases is extraordinary, and we'll continue to work with the sheriff to continuously prove that particular mark. But their contract is increasing $350,000 from 4.3 million to 4.67 million. As we told before, our contract is typically salary and benefits, our portion of fleet and our portion of their IT technology. And so, yes, it will increase on a normal basis, but again, we are the safest city, and we're extraordinarily less. If we had our own police department, it would be almost double that particular price we had our own police department. We also contract with Orange City for our fire, and of course, we doubled our fire services. They've gone through union contracts themselves. The price is increasing a little more than 418,000 than from last year than we anticipated. We're also working on the high water vehicle because of Hurricane Milton, and then also the fire truck as well. 31 months to get a fire truck in this city once it's ordered. And so, we decided to pull the $200,000 out of our general fund reserve to put deposit down, and then we can allocate over the next two fiscal years so that the city does not have to borrow money in order to get this fire truck in place. A great decision. It's only a one-time expense out of the general fund reserve, and it certainly makes good business sense to do this in this particular format. As the mayor may talk about later, the city of DeBarry is two or three years away from being debt-free, which is an extraordinary accomplishment. There's probably less than 1% of all the municipalities in the state of Florida that's Our legal services will, on the increase, unfortunately, and we do have some conflicts with obviously, DeBarry Plantation Community Association, Volusia County Schools, and the Bank of America foreclosure. We are going to need some subject matter experts in some of these particular cases, and unfortunately, our legal services budget is expected to increase here this next fiscal year. We talked about our parks and rec requirements, our capitals, there are pickleball courts, the storage facility. We got to improve the gateway monitoring system and the AC units there are over 17 years old. We talked about Alexander Island and the startup cost there. Our strategy is to, we're going to break the guaranteed maximum price contract up into two. We're going, you're going to see one for the entrance and then one for the remaining part of the project. We've got to get the entrance started. As you know, some of their capital projects involving the bridge with the road closure, it's important that those two projects happen simultaneously. And obviously, you see here the two additional employees, the garage, and obviously, the essential equipment is necessary to get that park open. We also talked about the public works. Little typo there, the road resurfacing, we're going to show you an increase there because of some of the revenues from the gas tax. So, that 768 is an old number, and we'll show you the new number here shortly. But these are the necessary equipments that we need for our public works department. We always go over our capital projects, and the more I look at this, the more impressed we get with our, with our performance in that these are some of the very high capital projects. The Fort Florida Road Upgrade is complete. The fire station is nearing completion. We'll have grand opening here and within the next maybe 30 to 45 days. Alexander Island project is the entrance of the construction and the Fort Florida Bridge. And then red there, I added the appropriations from grants that we've received from all these particular projects. And just these capital projects alone, you're looking at almost, almost five, four and a half million dollars there. So, these are some of the changes from the tentative budget that you approved. We did get some new revenues estimates from the communication services tax and the local option gas tax. It's about $43,000. You look on the very bottom there, you can see at the proposed budget, we proposed 813,000 in the, in the road resurfacing. The tentative budget, we kind of reduced it down, and with the new revenues, we're able to get back up to 832,000 for the road resurfacing. And overall, it's, it's an increase from our proposed budget of almost $19,000. And I think the council was clear that we're going to try to, since we're behind in our road resurfacing, that whatever we can do with road resurfacing, we did. So, Mayor and council, 3.65 mils, it is an increase of about $52 a year or $4 a month for the taxable value homes of 199,000. Mayor and council, we recommend, these are the business reasons, again, summarizing, these are the business reasons. Alexander Island startup, increase in safety costs, the legal costs due to pending lawsuits and long overdue equipment needs. Our staff's recommending a final rate of 3.65 and recommend approval of the final budget.
Thank you. City Clerk, is there any public participation?
No, ma'am, there is not.
Councilmember Sell, anything to discuss or make comment?
No comments.
Councilmember Papalardo?
I was unable to send my slide in, but I'll hold it up, and I don't know if I want to share it because that would probably go into the minutes, but that's fine. But this is the description I was trying to make for the past couple of weeks meetings, describing the difference of two years of increased expense of emergency services versus the millage. And what has happened is that the emergency services are actually up about 24.7% in two years. It's gone up since the adjustment on the union contract as well as adding the expense of the deposit on the fire truck, which I may have undersold on that one, but 24.7. Conversely, property valuations that would feed into the millage only went up 14.2%. So, there's about a 10% gap on just the appreciation value of emergency service inflation versus property appreciation. That's a half million dollar shortfall if everything else was equal. That's worth about .16 mils in its own right. So, the new 2.9247 is really 2.15 or so is basically where we sit right now, which is really unfortunate, but that is really what happens with monetary policy that runs away and it trickles down everywhere. Governments are not immune to inflation.
Councilmember Stevenson?
Yeah, I think we've hashed this out quite a bit. I think we made the right decision with the fire truck that doesn't impact us too heavily this year and doesn't put us in debt. Public safety, again, always our number one concern, so as difficult as this is, no further questions or comments, I'm fine.
Vice Mayor Butlin?
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing extra to add except that I'm glad that we've made these decisions for the safety and furthering of our city needs and making sure our residents are safe and secure. So, that's all I have, Mayor. Good with everything.
Sort of piggybacking on Councilmember Papalardo's comments that the cost to us of our contract services for fire and police functions, which we outsource because we have a long history of having great outsourcing partners and it's very cost-effective for our city, which your figures show in a certain guise, although your last number, you said 2-point something would be the millage, I'm not sure that's right, maybe 3-point something?
I was saying that if you were to, because we used to peg to 2.9247.
Yeah, right.
Add the 0.16, or really, the old, new number, the new old number would be like a 3.1.
Okay.
All things considered.
But you said 2.1.
Did I say 2? I'm sorry.
So, that's why I was double checking. I didn't want it on the record.
And if I could clarify really quickly, that is not to be any detriment to how great our emergency services are.
No.
They're excellent. It is just, we are in an extremely volatile economic economy right now.
Correct. And I, I watch all of the published notices for all of the jurisdictions in Volusia County. I read two papers a day. I see all of them because they're either in one paper or the other, and I'm one of the few people that reads those notices that fill up the bottoms of the pages. There was a required notice, which DeBarry did theirs last weekend, Sunday, I believe it was. There was a required notice from a sister city here in Volusia, which has perhaps 3,000 more residents and perhaps three more square miles or four more square miles than DeBarry does to, to serve. But their police and fire, what they called public safety, was over 15 million. And when I add our police at 4.67 and our fire at 3.51, I get 8.18. So, not quite half. They do have a larger thing. So, it's, it's not half of theirs, but it's not that far off. And so, this is another one of the things, you know, you benchmark yourself as you move along, and they have their own police force and their own fire service. And I understand the sentiment about wanting to have community policing where you grow up with the officer's kids and all of this, and we know them and they know us. There is a value to that. But we also have people that serve in ours, our sheriff's office, for example, that I know are DeBarry residents. They don't put that out there. LEO addresses are suppressed. So, I don't think we totally lose that in the contracting, but it was another way to sort of benchmark. We are convinced that our approach is very cost-effective without sacrificing performance. And to me, this was one other confirming factor. You know, a $7 million difference is a pretty big difference when our total is just over eight. So, if there's no further discussion, I would enter to take a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 2025-15 to set the final millage rate of 3.6500 for the levy of the ad valorem tax for fiscal year 2025-2026. The final millage rate of 3.6500 is 10.82% above the computed rollback rate of 3.2935.
Second.
Vice Mayor Butlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Papalardo?
Yes.
Councilmember Sell?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Agenda item number two, the city manager is requesting the city council adopt resolution number 2025-16 for the final annual operating budget for fiscal year 2025 to 2026. City Attorney, would you read resolution number 2025-16?
Yes, Mayor. A resolution of the City of DeBarry, Volusia County, Florida, adopting the final annual operating budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2025, and ending September 30th, 2026, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. The city manager did a combined presentation because the budget and the millage are so tightly intertwined. City Manager, do you have anything further to add, or are you open for questions, comments, and then perhaps action?
Proceed, Mayor. I don't need any more.
Councilmember Sell?
No questions.
Councilmember Papalardo?
No comments.
Councilmember Stevenson?
No comments, thank you.
Vice Mayor Butlin?
Just thank you to the staff for doing a great job again this year, so, thank you.
And I have nothing further to add, so I would entertain a motion.
I make a recommendation for the city council to adopt resolution 2025-16 setting the final annual operating budget for fiscal year 2025 to 2026.
You made a motion, not a recommendation.
A motion, sorry. It said recommendation.
Second.
Okay. Vice Mayor Butlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Papalardo?
Yes.
Councilmember Sell?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Are there any deletions or amendments to the agenda for this evening? Hearing none, we have next on the agenda, the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written, items numbers three and four.
Second. Second.
Councilmember Stevenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Butlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Papalardo?
Yes.
Councilmember Sell?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Moving on to new business, we are at agenda item number five. The city manager is requesting the city council approve the interlocal agreement between the county of Volusia and the city of DeBarry in accordance with HB 479, first of laws education this evening.
If I could interject, did we skip public participation as listed on the agenda?
It's not.
It's a special meeting.
Only because it was on there.
Yeah, it says five minutes for items on the, yeah. Okay. So, HB 479 and the repercussions for our city as we have a mobility plan area.
Mayor and council, we had put this item on the agenda and will recommend that we don't approve the agreement that's attached to our agenda. Last night, the Volusia County approved their version of the interlocal agreement in which that we do not agree with. And so, and the version that you see here is the city's version that, that we had proposed. The county has proposed a different version. Last night, they approved their version and, which we'll go over and request that, that we don't vote on, on an interlocal agreement tonight. With that, our next meeting is October 1, which does meet the statutory requirements in the statute. It does give us the opportunity for the next 14 days to, to come to an agreement. Now, the county did pass the agreement authorizing the city manager, the county manager to be able to make various minor changes to the agreement, which we hope we can get to over the next 14 days. Bringing back October 1, an agreement that both the county and the city agree to. But I wanted to take this, this moment of time to explain the law because it's, it's complicated, but you can see there that the legislature is making a clear, a clear intention to transition to transportation fees. As you know, the legislature is, over the last few years, are trying to simplify development. And, and again, this is another effort under House Bill 479 to do so. So, I do want to go over a House Bill 479, which section 163.3180, paragraph 5J, paragraph 1. And I want to go over, I'll read the actual, the actual law, and then, as you see there, I got some dots in between some words there because I didn't put everything in the, in the paragraph on the screen. Paragraph 1 is pretty simple. It says, "If a county and a municipality," and you'll notice in these, in these laws, you're going to hear the words shall and must in a lot of these laws. And I got you a copy of the law on the one page there. You can, you can follow along as I read them. This is, "If a county and a municipality charge the developer of a new development or redevelopment a fee for transportation capacity impacts, the county and the municipality must create and execute an interlocal agreement to coordinate the mitigation of their respective transportation capacity impacts." That means when two governments charge, in the simple terms, charge an impact fee in the same area, you, you must create and execute an interlocal agreement so that there's a transportation capacity impacts are not duplicated. So, in the interlocal agreement, paragraph 2, it says, "The interlocal agreement must, at a minimum, ensure that any new development is not charged twice for the same capacity impacts." And we did that through the mobility plan. We included, as you recall, we included Dirksen Avenue into our mobility plan.
Dirksen Drive?
Dirksen Drive, sorry. To, so that we are not duplicating impacts. Number 2, or B, establish a plan-based methodology, and that's really a key term here, for the determining the legal permissible fee to be charged to a new development or redevelopment. And the key is a planned-based methodology, and that's what our mobility plan is. It's a planned-based methodology. Unfortunately, the county does not have a planned-based methodology. They have a zone-based methodology. And so, to provide a legally permissible fee. It's a very important statement there. Number C, require the county or municipality issuing the building permit to collect the fee unless otherwise, unless agreed otherwise. That's very important. That, that provides us is that we are the building permit issuer. We are responsible to collect fees in the city. And then D, provide a method of proportion distribution of revenue collected by the county or municipality to address the transportation capacity impacts of new development or redevelopment, or provide a method of assigning responsibility for mitigation of the transportation capacity impacts belonging to the city and municipality. And so, in our proposed interlocal agreement, the city is proposing that because we have the mobility plan, we have a fiduciary responsibility of the impact fees that we collect, that it is assigned to the, the projects that are in the plan. As you remember, Dirksen is also including, is also included with the city roads. And our position as staff and as we've discussed with you all individually, that it is our fiduciary responsibility because these funds are in our mobility plan, that we have to make sure that these funds go to these particular projects, that we should be the administrator controlling of the funds. I'll come back to that because that, that is the bone of contention right now in our negotiations. But also want to go over if we don't have an interlocal agreement, and over the next 14 days will be a critical factor. So, it says on paragraph 3, "By October 1, 2025," which happens to be our next, and maybe it's fate, who knows, "if an interlocal agreement is not executed pursuant to this paragraph, then the following three items apply." And it says here, "The fee charged to new development or redevelopment shall be based upon the transportation capacity impacts apportioned to the county and the municipality identified in the developer's traffic impact study or the mobility plan adopted by the county or municipality." So, in this particular statement here, the city does have a mobility plan. And so, based in the mobility area, it will, the mobility plan will apply, and those fees that we, that the, the city has approved will be able to be charged in the mobility plan. However, the county doesn't have a mobility plan. They don't have a planned-based methodology, so all the areas outside of the mobility area, because we don't charge a transportation impact fee outside the mobility area, then the developer's traffic impact study will apply. And since we are required to collect the fee, one, some of our job will be to look at the developer's transportation impact study. And it's not the county's traffic, traffic impact study, it's developer's traffic impact study that will apply. And if it does imply by October 1, the developer shall receive a 10% reduction in the total fee calculated pursuant to paragraph or subparagraph A, which means that obviously, both the traffic impact study, whatever the developer does outside the mobility area, and our mobility plan, there will be a 10% reduction. That's the, that's the, that's the requirement if, if an interlocal agreement's not done. So, when we apply our mobility plan, we'll have to do a 10% reduction outside the mobility area, the traffic, the traffic study area. When we get those, we'll calculate what that fee should be, and then we will, we'll do a 10% reduction as well. And then C, the county and the municipality issuing the building permit must collect the fee pursuant to subparagraphs A and B and distribute, and distribute the proceeds to the county or, and municipality within 60 days of developer's payment. So, it's very clear what the process and what the, what the legislature's intent was. Obviously, we're trying to get to that October 1 deadline. So, as I said before, the county agreement, the county- So as I said before, the county agreement, the county did pass on 9/16, an older version of the interlocal agreement whereby they want various different things. Obviously, the main primary issue is the county wants to control the Dirksen Mobility Fund in their budget, meaning that when we collect mobility fees, they want those funds to be paid to them to where they house the money in the county. And that's one of the, that's probably the most important, one of the biggest major issues. In the city's agreement that's attached here, obviously, the city mobility plan is governed by the city. And to ensure compliance with that established plan, the city needs to be administered. And we highly recommend that the Dirksen Mobility Fund be included in the city budget. The city agrees, made an, agrees in our plan to delegate the administration to the county outside the mobility area, which means that outside the mobility area, we would tell the developer, "Go see the county. Let the county apply whatever fees that they appropriately should be. They can collect the money. They can do everything else outside the mobility area." But inside the mobility area, all the money comes to the city. It's administered by the city. So some of the other remaining issues and differences right now is the payment processing. We had put the return reimbursement, that when the county, for example, starts the engineering, they would pay for that engineering, and then we would reimburse them to make sure that the project, Dirksen, is done on a timely basis. The engineering is done on a reimbursement basis. They had a little objection to that because they had to, that means they would have to accumulate the money in their coffers, and then we would reimburse them. So we didn't compromise and say, "Okay, look, we'll just, the city will pay their invoices, approved invoices, to their vendors direct." So this way, they wouldn't have to accumulate the money in their coffers. They would say, "Hey, here's the engineer's draw. We approve of it. We would pay the engineer direct." And that will prevent them from having to store their money in their particular fund. And then the other area of agreement, disagreement is timeframe. The county is uncertain that the money will be available to complete the project in seven years. We offered an extension, you know, provided an extension provision just in case the mobility or the TOD in the mobility area doesn't grow as we anticipate it to grow. But we got a lot of projects committed. We've approved the development agreements. We know the Main Street's coming, that those things are committed. The capacity for Dirksen Avenue is going to happen.
Dirksen Drive?
Dirksen Drive, sorry. And so, and there is some case law regarding impact fees need to be spent within seven years of collection. There's also the issue of rational nexus. And rational nexus is an important issue in that the developers that are in the TOD who pay these particular impact fees should see the benefit to their particular payments, which is Dirksen Avenue.
Drive.
Under the zoning plan of the county, excuse me, Dirksen Drive. It's a habit, I'm sorry. But the county's plan doesn't necessarily be able to take that money and can spend it to east side of Deltona or north side of Orange City. It doesn't provide rational nexuses to the developers that are here. And really, our response to that particularly is, is that the real estate development and their investments and the businesses that invest in the TOD need Dirksen approved on a timely basis to be able to support those real estate investments and to support those business investments. And under the zone plan, it doesn't do that. And so, council, I wanted to explain the law a little bit so everybody fully understands. I know as policymakers, you may not read, get in depth to some of these particular regulations, but there are seven paragraphs that are very clear on the intent. I hold steadfast that, you know, it's the city's mobility plan. The county has offered to turn this Dirksen Drive over to the city for administration, which I don't recommend either. And because if we're going to control the money, why don't we just give you the road? And I don't recommend that either. And so, it's been responsibility of the county for decades, and there's been a lot of impact fees that have been collected in the city of DeBury, and now not any improvements on the Dirksen Drive. So mayor, council, right now, we are at an impasse. Hopefully, over the next 14 days, we can bring back an agreement that the county and the city agree with, and we can approve that. So I'll be able to answer any of your questions and take any comments.
City clerk, do we have any public comment?
No, ma'am, we do not.
Councilmember Sell, feedback, questions?
I definitely have questions. So Carmen, the county has a zoning style of doing impact fees.
Zone-based, yeah.
How does that include just like all of West Volusia County? Is it all Volusia County?
Orange City, Deltona, and DeBury.
Okay.
Well, the zone base is for the whole county. That's just our zone.
That's our zone, I'm sorry. There are about, I think there's five or six zones. Our zone is Orange City, Deltona, and DeBury.
So if a DeBury sinks $40 million in the downtown area and they pay their impact fee, their expectation is that if the traffic on Dirksen gets to the point where people try to avoid it like the plague, then people are not going to come and enjoy downtown necessarily. I try to avoid I-4 West anything. I want to go towards Daytona. There's not that much traffic going that way as there is the other way towards Disney. So that's, that's one thing that would impact something going that way for me, even Lake Mary sometimes. So I understand their expectation is that the money collected will be spent nearby. Not according to the county, though. They could have an issue with a road over in Deltona. Maybe there's a friend on the county council, he pulls some strings. They spend that money that they collected over here, over there. So somebody over there benefits, not us. So I love the idea of the mobility plan. My next question is, what happens if the county sits on their hands for the next two weeks? Do they win or do we win? I know the developer wins, he gets a discount.
Well, kind of sort of neither of us win. There's a 10% discount in the mobility plan, certainly. But I think the, when you have a developer, that the impact fees are based upon their traffic study, there's a large range of traffic impact studies methodologies. Yeah, the developer is going to choose the cheapest methodology. And unfortunately, based upon the statute there, I don't know if there's how much argument by, based upon the statute on that methodology. And so, yeah, whatever they submit, it's a 10% reduction of whatever they submit.
I got, I think I got. The only other question is, is our whole idea is to collect the monies and put a savings account away for Dirksen Drive, which would be the county's share?
Yeah, and what we tried to explain, that this is a partnership. This is not a we versus they type of an agreement. All of us want to get Dirksen done on a timely basis. The county is looking at their road program countywide. They have other priorities other than Dirksen Drive. And, and the demand. I don't know where the growth is going to be and the demand are going to be, and the county's demand is going to be, and what their priorities are. And their priorities may be in Deltona. And that's where the roads get widened, is in Deltona rather than Dirksen. And so, that's what has to be analyzed here. But again, we go back to rational nexus, the timeframe and to do the project, and who controls the money. And so, it's a partnership. We both want Dirksen Drive done if the capacity happens. And if it doesn't happen in seven years, then we can provide an extension until the capacity needs are there, and then we can do Dirksen. But the key issue is to get Dirksen Drive done for the rational nexus of the developments that occur in the mobility area.
Who will inevitably decide on working with us on this or not? Is it the county council or is it?
Well, they approved, they approved the old agreement authorizing the county manager to make minor adjustments. And so, we have the ability to work out these details we just explained here of who controls the money, the payment processing, the timeframe extension, putting a provision there for timeframe extension. And again, if we don't, if the staff doesn't agree with those provisions, then we're going to be in impasse October 1.
We're really honestly just trying to hold the county accountable for Dirksen and say, "Hey, it's time to get serious about it. Let's start putting some money away for it."
Correct.
So if they don't agree with us, basically, they're just not serious about making any movement on Dirksen anytime soon.
They have, again, and all due respect to them, their county road program is large. They have a lot of priorities. And, and the growth rate is, you know, pretty high in this particular area. We're growing like crazy, and so the transportation demands come with that as well. So there are a lot of priorities. But unfortunately, the rational nexus part of this is that, is that in this particular area, again, you can do all the development in the TOD in the mobility area, but if you don't prove Dirksen and it backs up and nobody wants to come here, then the real estate investments and the business investments suffer. And that's, that's, obviously, you don't want to get on I-4 during rush hour, and you don't want to go to certain places because the traffic's so bad. And so, yeah, that, those are some of the considerations, and that's why the rational nexus issue is so important, is that when the capacity is there that needs to be upgraded, it needs to be upgraded. We've spent an enormous amount of effort making sure that our infrastructure is in place before growth has come. We made extraordinary efforts on Fort Florida Road and the bridges and everything else to make sure the infrastructure is in there. And that's, that's what we're asking for here, is that the Dirksen Drive be done at the timely manner in which the capacity justifies it.
That's all I got, thanks.
Councilmember Papalardo?
I have a quick question about, do we have an estimate for the cumulative collected impact fees to the county, that the county is holding on for Dirksen?
Again, I don't, I don't have that number. I mean, as far as the amount of impact fees that have been collected in the city of DeBury, I don't have that number. I can probably estimate it for you, but I don't have what's been collected in the city of DeBury.
The reason I ask is you mentioned that the county might just try to throw Dirksen in our lap, whether we like it or not. And not that they're going to try to, but that could be a result of a
It has to be a mutual agreement, of course.
We would have to accept it.
I understand, sorry, I said that too frankly. The reason I think about that is I would love to see the modeling behind it, if, should we be made whole on all the impact fees due to Dirksen through whatever math? If they brought Dirksen up to, up to a modern standard, which it certainly is not, and then we maintain it from there on, and then we can collect a certain parts of that. Not that we necessarily want to have Dirksen, but it's made me quite curious.
Well, I don't, I don't know, looking in the past, where you're going to be able to reconcile what happened in the past, but this is really agreement going forward, you know, and trying to partner with them to make sure that if we anticipate the growth that's coming, that when that capacity is, that the money is available to Dirksen on a timely basis.
I absolutely agree with this presentation. Sorry for the tangent, it was just an interesting concept.
Councilmember Stevenson?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify, for this agenda item, we don't actually have an interlocal agreement to approve tonight. Rather, you're asking for us to
Table it till this time.
Table and give you permission to continue negotiations in favor of the city until October 1. And hopefully, we'll have an interlocal agreement that we can agree on that the city and the county are both fairly, feeling like they're fairly represented. Okay, thank you, that's all.
Vice Mayor Butlin?
Thank you, mayor. Question, the clock starts ticking October 1 on this law?
Yes.
So there's nothing retro? All the money that they've collected all those years?
That's theirs.
It's there, that's what I'm saying.
It's not a retro, it's, well, moving forward.
There's nothing in the law that talks about retro.
Of all the fees that we do collect, how do we know how much portion of that is Dirksen? Is it by miles? Is it by road surface?
Well, we, in the interlocal agreement, there's a, there's a number called 19%. And Dirksen, the cost of improving Dirksen is 19% of our mobility plan. And so, the offer that we made to the county was, is that every project, we will put 19% in the Dirksen Mobility Fund, and the balance will go into the city fund for the city projects. And we'll accumulate that 19% on each and every transaction. And that's, that's the, that's the plan. And so.
Okay.
It's in the, it's in our interlocal agreement. I believe it's in theirs as well, but they want them to control the money, and we would prefer the money be in the city's coffers.
I agree with that 100%, considering that they've had all this money all this time and have not done one thing on that Dirksen Drive. But, yeah, I have no problem putting this on hold until we get a better clarification from them. That's it from me, ma'am.
I would say, I think both sides have a lot of motivation under this law to reach an agreement by our next meeting, October 1. Really, the three sticking points that remain are, we feel, the city feels strongly that we should control the money, because even if we're told that it will go into a special county account, the county can do things like encumber the impact fees that they have to finance transportation projects. We would not want Dirksen fees encumbered. One of our proposals, which I believe would still be on the table, was, okay, if you want this to be ironclad for Dirksen, our legal counsel can maintain the special Dirksen account, which can be audited or whatever, completely separate, not part of the city's budget and general bank accounts, just like we don't want it to be part of the county's general budget and bank accounts. And this is the sticking point. They would like to have it there so that when they get ready to use it, whenever that would be, because they don't like seven years, that the money would be there. But all of the rest of their system to date works on this zone-based plan, which is not the kind of thing that this law says you may have. Within a mobility fee, within a mobility plan area, it must be a plan-based methodology for deciding impact fees. You can't just do something and have the zone, Orange City, DeBury, Deltona. And what has happened in the past is mobility fees collected in DeBury for county roads have ended up in that zone, and we have not seen anything spent on Dirksen, which has generated some of the fees over the years. We just don't know how much. We haven't gone back and done that research. And in fact, I know that within this zone, I believe there are two major projects where most of the zone money is going to go, I think, in the next few years. One is Graves in Orange City, and the other is Doyle, which is the extension of Dirksen in Deltona. So our concern that there be some pretty strict control of this money, I think, is well-placed, because the county's not used to working in a plan-based system. They've got their zone-based system. I think that this bill, 479, provides some guidance as to the direction the state is going. The state is going to say, "We're going to take more control over how you collect and disburse money if you are not doing it in a way that has a direct nexus with the projects that are done." And I think that this will be problematic for the county over time, but that's their problem, not ours. Dirksen Drive and the mobility plan is our problem. And so, I really would encourage the city manager to hold as firmly as he can, but to show some flexibility. It's going to serve neither the county nor the city. If we have to accept the developer's traffic study methodology, which is within a group of methodologies that are acceptable in the trade, they're going to choose the least demanding, the one having the least effect on their project, and then we have to discount it 10%. So when the time comes when the improvements have to be made, there's going to be a big gap where we have to find other financing. It will hurt both the city and the county. So we have three basic sticking points, and I'm hopeful that we will be able to make progress and that on October 1, we will approve an agreement, because ceding that kind of benefit to developers is in none of our interests. We can expect them to be business people and to try to keep their dollar expenditures down as low as possible. So city attorney, what would the, is there So, city attorney, what would the, is there any required motion to either table this or revisit it October 1? What is the appropriate method for doing this?
Someone could bring a, sorry. Someone could bring a motion. A motion to table would be fine.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to table, item number five, until October 1, so that the city manager can continue to negotiate with the county on an interlocal agreement in accordance with HB 479.
Second.
Councilmember Stevenson?
Second.
Vice Mayor Butlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Papalardo?
Yes.
Councilmember Selle?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Item number six on our agenda, the city manager is requesting the city council discuss and provide guidance on increasing the city manager's purchasing threshold to improve productivity and efficiency. City manager, would you like to do the presentation? Or is finance director going to do this?
No, well, I can, I can do it there. I provided, I sent, we had sent an email.
It's not really your purchasing threshold so much as how the purchases are executed. Is that correct? You're not asking for a million dollars as your upper limit or whatever. You're asking for greater flexibility in how, and the dollar amounts that have to be done with the more extensive process.
Correct. You may recall, Vice Mayor Butlin brought this issue up, and the council desired to have this discussion item on the agenda, this agenda. I sent an email out, that came from the city of Deltona, when they were talking about their thresholds. They did a survey of all the other cities, of what their procurement process was regarding quotes and RFPs and everything else, and who had the authority to approve at what level. In our particular organization, I mean, you've got a terrific finance director who scrutinizes everything on the planet, which is great, and I do too as well. And so, we do have a lot of internal controls. Right now, everything, and I mean everything, that's over $1,000, I sign off on. So I see everything, every expenditure that's $1,000 or more. And so we have internal controls. Now, you won't see that in any other city's procurement, because the city manager sometimes in there, in some of these other cities, don't see any expenditures until it's $25,000. But I, you know, my background is finance as well, with the Department of Revenue. Liz is a strong finance director. We put a tight, when we came aboard in 2000, when I came aboard in 2000, we made sure we had a tight internal process to make sure that the money was accounted for, et cetera, et cetera. It used to be $500, but you allowed that increase to 1,000. We want that to remain. Everything that's over 1,000 bucks will be, will be signed off by me as an oversight. It's important. It needs to happen that way. The other part, obviously, from, from, from $0 to $5,000 right present now, is the, it requires one quote for everything from up to 5,000. And then from 5,000 to 35,000, which you changed, moved from 25 to 35, it requires three quotes. And of course, you know, and then everything over 35,000 requires a formal RFP process, RFQ process, which is extremely formal. It doesn't provide a whole lot of flexibility for negotiations. In the RFP, we actually designate a scope of work, and based upon that scope of work, that's what's bid, and those are the prices that are given. When you get into the three-quote arena, there's a lot more flexibility, there's a lot more discussion, and a lot more creativity of different methods and different materials. And so, the other factor, obviously, is time. Everything pretty much costs more than $5,000 these days. Repairs, air conditions, and some of the things that sparked, a lot of this is the air conditioning over Gateway. It's more than $5,000. They've got no air conditioning. We've got to get three quotes. It takes 10 to 15 days to get those. It takes a lot of work from our staff to go gain those quotes, and for them to put those quotes and figure out what system is needed and put those prices together, takes some time for those quotes to come in, that we analyze them, compare, and then, and then execute. And so, yeah, it does take some time. So those, some of those numbers do have a productivity aspect of it, that if I got an expenditure of, let's say, $7,500, we're going to get three quotes. We're expending a lot of time and money in getting those particular quotes. It slows down the process. And so what we're trying to do is find that happy medium to where we can efficiently get some of these projects done. There's, you know, the time that we're spending on doing three quotes, are we really saving that much by just doing one, when you have so much scrutiny between the finance director and the city manager of these particular expenditures? And what's that appropriate level to optimize both efficiency, but also the effectiveness of the dollars that are being spent? So I'll leave that up for discussion. Obviously, moving it from 5,000 to 10,000 frees us up a little bit more to be able to do the one quote with 10,000. As you know, Liz and I, we'll squeeze it to make sure we get the best deal in that quote. And if we don't have, happy with the quote, we can certainly go get another quote. That's our, that's an option. The other factor is the RFP process, and from 35,000 to 50,000, moving that there does the same thing. And I'm going to tell you this, in our experience, that when you get into the RFP process, things just cost more. It's just the competitive bid process just costs more, because there's not a whole lot of flexibility in negotiations in those, in those processes. And so it does. And so the three quotes, raising it up gives us a little bit more flexibility to negotiate those quotes. Again, trying to promote creativity, trying to promote different materials. You can discuss those and those particular quotes and choose the best one. So again, this is a balance between efficiency, trying to get, alleviate all the administrative work, but also the accountability part of it, to make sure that the dollars are spent wisely. And so where's that particular balance? And so that's where, that's where I'll leave that with, with the council. Again, a lot of it's confidence. And as I put into the agenda item here, the level of confidence that you have with the city manager and the finance director. You know, if and when I leave, then a new city manager steps in, the confidence of the council may be a little less. You have the authority to go up and down with these particular numbers as you see fit. A new council member, a new city manager, you might be, say, okay, let's start it down a little bit low, until he earns the confidence and proves to us that he has the ability, he or she has the ability to scrutinize these expenditures and et cetera, et cetera. So confidence and trust is a major factor in your decision as well. Not to say if you don't increase the values, you don't trust me or anything else. It's, we're trying to improve efficiency and trying to get some of these, these projects done in a more expedient manner, without having to spend a large amount of administrative time trying to, trying to get there. I'll leave it at that, Mayor.
Okay. City clerk, do we have any public participation?
No, ma'am, we do not.
Councilmember Selle?
Although I always hated the three quotes, because they always seem to be a little bit in cahoots, and I think they just kind of pass that tray around, like, who wants this bid now? And they get it a little bit lower. I know the game a little bit. The only thing I would ask is, is there anything in the verbiage that says Carmen has a big family, Tommy owns an HVAC company, I only need one quote, and look, Tommy's HVAC wins again? And you're doing all the air conditioning work around the city via Tommy, because you only need one quote? He's a family member, let's throw him a bone and keep him eating. What if I owned an HVAC company, and you're like, Bill, I need a quote? Here's a quote, Carmen. Can there be something in there that's like, you know, kind of family relatives, council members, city employees, maybe they have a part-time gig? Is there anything in there that we could kind of put that in there, like an asterisk, and say, hey?
Well, we kind of scrutinize that now. Obviously, you know, if it's a family member or a related family member, it doesn't get past us. That's a, that's a no-no, and that, that will lead to discipline.
Does the city attorney have any comment on-
Well, I certainly wouldn't recommend the city contracting with a family member's business or the, or the family, or the-
And that's, and that's really a conflict of interest, to do those types of things, where you're, you're giving a bid to somebody who's a friend of a friend and everything else. Those are conflicts that, that end employment pretty quickly. And so we tend to don't do that.
I've watched that play out on the news, with a certain mayor in Chicago at one time employed half her family. And I don't even know anything ever happened to that.
I don't know about Illinois law, but we have some pretty strict laws in the state of Florida that prohibit that.
Well, that's kind of what I'm asking is-
Nepotism and everything else.
Yeah.
There's some personnel rules and everything else that prohibit, you know, nepotism, hirings, but purchasing, those are the things that certainly, that we monitor, making sure those things don't happen.
Anything else?
I was just thinking that maybe if you, hey, every month, you could update us on some purchases, and if we want to scrutinize them or look at them.
Well, you have a right to do that now.
You can walk in any day and ask to see the last 30 days.
Just remember that.
Well, you, again, there are some organizations that charge the council members for public records.
Yes.
But we don't. Our public records, you can walk into our offices, and whatever document you requested, you can certainly have. We're fully transparent, and we, we're very confident in the decisions that we make, that we uphold integrity and the ethics of our, of our jobs, for sure.
That's my only concern, basically.
Again, that's the level of confidence. And if you're not sure, then certainly you can lower them, for sure.
Councilmember Papalardo?
Couple thoughts. First, Councilmember Selle, our charter actually says that no employee can enter, or council member can enter a contract with the city for one year, within one year of ending service. So that, so that is protected to some degree. Now, enforcement, got to catch it. Internal controls are what I'm thinking about. I'm glad you mentioned, we have some very good internal controls. That's what's fortunate about having a smaller-scale government here. I think the city manager signing off on anything greater than $1,000 is a waste of time. By a significant degree, I think that should be $2,000. I really don't want you spending time on a $1,200 invoice. That's probably part of a bigger project, anyway.
Can I respond back to that?
Yeah.
And there's a reason why I do, that I require that. And one is, is that I want to make sure that when something gets repaired, I'm doing, I'm doing an internal evaluation of whether that equipment needs to be replaced or it's repaired. And so, that's, that's the money-saving proposition that I look at and go, okay, this is the second time it's been repaired. And, and so that's why I do the $1,000, to make sure they're not wasting money on repairs when the product needs to be re, and so I'm doing that return on investment evaluation on all those. That's why that I keep it at 1,000 bucks.
That's very noble. Then, another thing is, part of internal controls, it's a concept called Benford's Law. And it makes me want to move the threshold from 10 to $12,000 for that next tier. And the reason is, is because Benford's Law, it's part of accounting auditing, kind of, states that when you add the next zero onto a number, and the law of great numbers, here, large numbers, you're going to see the largest count of instances with the lowest leading digit. So you're going to see lots of 10,000 and change, 11,000 and change, just mathematical probability, and that's a sign that your auditing is going well. So that's why I would like to make it, say, $12,000, because I think the scale at which we're going to see a lot more benefit, even from the 5 to 10, that 10 to 12 is going to improve a lot of that. And I agree very strongly that there is a significant waste of time, delay of projects, expansion in the scope and scale and cost of these projects when we go through the additional processing time. So that would be my one small adjustment I would like to propose, is that there is a good audit standard concept here, that making it 12,000 would be a value add. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Stevenson?
Thank you. How many years has it been since we last raised your purchasing power? It's been, what, one or two years?
No, it's actually been less than six months ago.
Six months ago.
Yeah. Okay. But this isn't so much purchasing power, this is efficiency of process. I see it more that than-
Yeah, for example, if our Parks and Rec person, you know, has to do something more than $5,000, then they have to go out and get three bids. And so your Parks and Rec director and his staff are going, are going out there, trying to find three folks, not only for three bids, but three people who are willing to bid. And some of the projects that we have-
You don't get three.
We don't get three, because people are not want for-
They're not that interested in a small project.
Yeah. Yeah. For example, I think one, one of our recent quotes, the person said, well, I'm not going to be able to get this to, done for another 12 months. And so, there are folks out there that are so busy, they're not able to get to some of our particular project, or they're not willing to do it. And that's, not everybody that we ask for a quote gives us one.
I feel like the original intent for having quotes like this in government was to make sure that we were operating efficiently and getting the lowest price for the taxpayers, as well as making sure that there was no conflicts of interest. I do hold our staff in high confidence, and honestly, you go to Costco, a package of paper towels 10 years ago was 10 bucks, now it's 20, 25 bucks. Same thing here. And so, yes, for some of these small purchases, and changing, changing these rules with the quotes a little bit, making it more efficient, I'd be fine with. I'd also be fine with Papalardo's recommendation to possibly go up to 12. I do agree with that theory. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Butlin?
Thank you, Mayor. This is, all reasons discussed is why I brought this up. You know, when we need an air conditioner at Gateway, which is what happened last month, it had to come to us, get approved, and go on, where if he had, was able to do that, it would have been done already. So the inefficiency in that step, and with the cost of everything going up, it's not even, you know, and I have to trust our staff, and I do, our staff, our city manager, all of our directors, to say, they're, they're all interested in the betterment of the city as well. And having this option is, it was just miniscule compared to the cost of things. And the thing, you know, it's gone, yeah, we only did a couple months, but it's gone up so much even in a couple months. So that's the reason why I brought it up, and I have no problem going to the 12,000. I think that makes a little bit more sense. And that's it. I think I'm okay.
Okay. I would agree with the majority here, and the recap would be, with the 0 to 1,000 stays as is, because Carmen wants to see it at 1,000. And he gets your point, Jim, but he thinks that he gets some other value added by looking at 1,000 instead of 2,000. But the next would be 1,000 to 12,000, one quote approved by city manager. The following would be 12,001 cent to 50,000, two or more written quotes approved by the city manager, and 50,001 cent or above formal solicitation. I think that was what I heard as a consensus view.
Yes.
So you're asking for guidance?
Yes.
That is the guidance that we would give you.
Well, we will bring back a resolution for you to, for your approval.
Right, right. That's why I wanted to recap it by, by moving down the tiers, so that, that is what we all agreed?
May I add one more point? Can there be anything in here, when you bring it back to us, where it automatically gets triggered for review if there's a new city manager?
Well, that's, I mean, because we may, may or may not be here, I mean, I would hope that we'd be paying attention.
Can we put that in the policy, if, if it's change the city manager, it requires a city council review?
If we put it in there, it's actually, whether the actually council reads it?
And whether they actually read it and knew it was in there, and there was enough institutional memory to find it for them. Correct. It's just a concern that I thought I'd-
Well, we can certainly put it in the policy, and making sure that it's a requirement under the procedure, and, and then that the finance director will be able to, when they do-
Councilmember Selle stole it from me, but that needs to be, that's actually a great item for our number first part to put on the list for the charter review committee.
There you go.
Because if we're talking about continuity of government with the city manager appointment, and we want to exercise a policy review, that kind of needs to be part of the appointment process. That's only- process. That's the only way it's going to be caught, practically, I think.
All right. I think we can figure out what the best approach is.
Carmen, can you bring it back?
And you two, remember it for the next couple of years after I'm gone.
And one more, one more change, Mary. You said two or more, and that might be a type on one of those documents.
It says two or more.
It needs to be three or more.
Three or more. Got it. Okay. I thought that that was giving you even more leeway.
No.
But that's what it was written. Three or more. Okay. Yeah. That is what I think I heard as far as consensus.
Yeah. And that's, thank you very much. I think, I can tell you that the money that's being spent, Barry, is being scrutinized on a daily basis all the time. And we have great conversation, our finance director and I have great conversation in a lot of issues. And we debate a lot of issues. And I can tell you, between the both of us, we're the best of the best. So I'm just going to brag a little bit about her, and she holds me accountable, and I hold her accountable. And it's a great, it's a great match. So.
That's great. Wonderful. All right. Moving on to agenda item number seven. The city manager is requesting the city council discuss and provide guidance regarding SB 180, Chapter 2025-190, laws of Florida, which was passed by the Florida Legislature during the 2025 session and signed into law by Governor DeSantis. Now, just as a reminder, this item is here because we have had a couple of approaches to the city, asking for the city to back one approach or another. One is, there is a lawsuit that interested parties can join at what I think is a fairly low fee. And my view on that might be different if we had an impending situation. And then the chair of the city council provided language that their lawyers had put together to use in lobbying in Tallahassee during the coming legislative season, and was asking for a letter of support. And whether or not we would want to do that is, you know, part of this discussion. So, city manager, would you like to approach this with your presentation?
Thanks, Mayor and Council. So I'm going to give you a little background of how a lot of this, before it was Senate Bill 250, now it's Senate Bill 180 in their different legislative sessions. Ultimately, the background, obviously, and typically, I believe it's from the Hurricane Michael that hit the Panhandle. After the storm, cities changed their regulations, maybe took the opportunity to revise their downtowns. People who owned property and their buildings were damaged, had a very difficult time on rebuilding their property, even though they got life insurance, I mean, excuse me, their property insurance money and everything else. Because the regulations changed, they couldn't rebuild, either they couldn't rebuild, or they couldn't rebuild it the way it was. And so Senate Bill 250 was passed preventing local governments from changing land development codes after a hurricane. So to prevent, that if somebody's house was, or somebody's commercial building or house, before the hurricane, and the hurricane came through, they should be able to build their house and their building the way it was before the hurricane. And so, and that's really what Senate Bill 250 was all about. This year, it, last year, it Senate Bill 180, it went to the next level. And it also, based upon the last hurricanes through October 1, 2027, it prohibits the moratorium of construction, reconstruction, redevelopment of any property damaged by hurricanes. It became, there's a provision for more restrictive and burdensome amendments to comp plans or land development regulations. And if you changed your land development regulations that were more burdensome, the developer can designate those burdensomes, and they can use the old land development code. And some of the procedures, maybe they'd be able to go straight to the courts to provide that burdensome stuff. But it also applies retroactively to August 1, 2024, which means that if you pass anything after August 1, 2024, that has become burdensome, then the developer can certainly use that provision to try to use the land development code or anything prior to August 1, 2024. And so Section 18 of this particular law even adds one year to the counties if there's a federal disaster declaration. And they also changed the provision in Senate Bill 250. Now it's located, if your city or county is located within 100 miles, and they changed it from, it used to be where it made landfall, to if you were in 100 miles of the track of the hurricane, which made it a little bit more difficult. And it prohibited a lot of all moratorium for the time period in Section 28. So this is the opportunity that we like to brag a little bit about a proactive government, and some of the things that we've done to where really Chapter 180 is of very minimal impact to the city of DeBarry. While the other cities are having issues, we have very little. So, anyway, I do want to talk about some of our experiences, things that we've done proactively. When we identify problems, we are quickly resolving them. And I use some of these four examples. And the TOD, for example, identifying trends and envision the problems there. When we came in, the TOD district was stagnant. We were getting a lot of issues regarding apartment-only complexes. We saw loopholes in our land development regulations. And we quickly did a moratorium and covered up those particular loopholes. We passed the Main Street regulations. But we envisioned and solved the problems early on, before or after, before the development actually occurred.
Could you give us a year on that for those here who may not know?
2020.
2020.
And that was, and then we did, we also did the mobility plan that particular year as well. So we identified the trends, and we envisioned the problem. We took care of it before the development started and came, because we were getting those particular inquiries. Some governments don't take those inquiries, see them as a problem or a danger, and they don't envision what those would be. Number two is that we just updated our land development code. And we took two to three years to go to a form-based code, but we found they got there, we moved it and accelerated it to make sure we got it implemented. And we did a moratorium to make sure that we updated our land development code, and we got it done and approved by July 2025. So Senate Bill doesn't necessarily apply...
I think that'd be July 24.
Oh, screw it, 24.
Yeah. It was the month before the hurricane.
My bad. July 2024. Thank you. Good catch. And so, these are things that we knew that our land development code was outdated. We didn't just leave it there and suffer with it. We went ahead and updated it and got it done. Stormwater management is the big one. And this is some of the other cities that are having problems with flooding and everything else. They want to put moratoriums in place to develop, to prevent development, or to change their environmental regulations to hold more water, or, because most of your stormwater facilities, they're tuned to 11 inches of rain in 24 hours. Well, you can raise those in some developments, but you have to do a moratorium, you've got to get your land development code done, and you've got to change your environmental regulations to do that. Well, Senate Bill 180 doesn't allow that. But with the city of DeBarry, we've put in very proactively $34 million of infrastructure. We have very minimal flooding here. All of our remaining projects are already engineered and fully permitted. We're ready to go and implement them. It's a priority here. We want to, we make sure that we keep flooding to the minimum possible. There, we had, with the city's facilities or infrastructure, we only had about six houses that were impacted. Very minor intrusion. Most of our flooding were from private, private retention ponds overflowing was some of our major problems. But our infrastructure, very minor, mostly at DeBarry plantation. And there are some other issues there as well. But also, we acquired land to preserve. Palm Drive was scheduled for, remember, 150 townhomes. And we denied those, and we bought the property, and we put it under perpetual preservation. We bought the property on Dirksen Avenue...
Drive.
Drive. Why am I calling it Avenue? I'm sorry. Dirksen Drive, the 35 acres there, because there were already 114 platted lots there. And then obviously Alexander Island, we purchased Alexander Island. That was scheduled for between 40 and 60 houses, and to preserve and conserve that particular there. But we also negotiated down density to hold down wherever we could. Remember, Main Street is 50%, more than 50% lower density than was scheduled by previous councils. We also did the townhomes on East High Banks, where it was scheduled for 378 apartments. And we got it down to 128 townhomes. And so those are some of the significant things that we've done to try to hold down stormwater and flooding. And so it's these particular things that we've done on a proactive basis, and again, I'm bragging about how we do these particular things, that really Senate Bill 180 has just a minimal impact. Because our land development code was done before August 1, 2024. And some of, all of our moratoriums were done before August 1, 2024. And so, in conclusion, you know, we have worked with Senate Bill 250 guidelines. And the map that you see on the right-hand side, we were questioned regarding the old bill, where it said 100 miles within landfall. And we were questioned at one time about our ability to change land development codes because of Senate Bill 250. Well, we didn't fall in any of those circles that you see there. The county did, Deltona did, DeLand did, but City of DeBarry did not. And so we were able to move forward with some of our changes, because lo and behold, we were not within 100 miles of the landfall of those particular hurricanes. We also implemented administrative procedures. As you remember, the bill came in, you heard a lot of the other cities were having difficulty. They were getting offers for, to join lawsuits, et cetera, et cetera. But we implemented administrative procedures on how to handle this burdensome claim that developers might have. And that was to make application with the city manager. And the city manager will be able to determine whether a procedure is burdensome or not, and whether it had provided opportunities for negotiation. And we did that in August of 2025. However, we're confident that Senate Bill 180 needs improvement. I don't know what kind of adjustments are going to be made, and what the political waves are. But I think we should recommend some improvement to Senate Bill 180. I think the legislature has been listening. And I think, hopefully, they will make some changes. So, but I'm confident that they will. Now, over 21 cities have joined this lawsuit. And in here, I believe in the packet there, you'll see that there's an offer and a resolution to join a lawsuit. Some 21 cities have paid $10,000 to this attorney firm to go ahead and file a lawsuit, whether it includes a junction and first, and then suing the state, or just going ahead and suing the state and see what kind of changes, and see what's unconstitutional or not. I think the biggest problem with this particular bill might be the retroactivity of this particular bill. But Volusia County decided not to join the lawsuit. They have decided that they want to make some outline, and they have outlined in your, in the PowerPoint there, have outlined some changes they recommend in the Senate Bill 180. So our strategic options are, one, to join the lawsuit, which I don't recommend, because obviously, before they even get started, the legislative session starts in January. It just doesn't make sense to create that conflict when you have an opportunity to make improvements through the legislative process. Or, two, do a letter of support to the county. Yeah, we support the changes that you're recommending, and that we'll join up with you to advocate changes to Senate Bill 180. Now, what they're recommending may not be the best changes, but certainly, we could recommend a letter of support in helping them and joining them for advocacy to improve Senate Bill 180. Or we can advocate individually with the legislature, certainly pose what we think needs to be changed with our representatives. And so you can do the letter of support and advocate individually. Certainly can do both of those. But I certainly don't recommend joining the lawsuit. I don't think it's, there's a benefit there. So I leave it up to council to discuss whether you want to move forward with a letter of support. And when you, if you do decide to go that direction, the mayor would, we'll draft a letter for the mayor to sign, designating a letter of support that DeBarry is supporting them in their advocacy to, for improvement of Senate Bill 180. Or do neither of the lawsuit or the letter, and do our own individual advocacy with our legislative representatives.
Thank you. We do have public participation. Rory Dupuy, would you approach the mic and give your name and address for the record?
Rory Dupuy, 235 Eldorado Drive. Good pronunciation, by the way. So, yeah, I've been living here for 10 years now. June was my, you know, my, when I first moved down here, June 2015. And I love it here. I love my neighbors. This is a good place to live. It's really, really nice to see you guys, you know, up here smiling and actual functioning council. But I'm here right now as one of your bosses, and I'm asking you to fight against SB 180. I've been beating this drum for months now, excuse me, mostly online. I feel it's a terrible bill, and is a betrayal from our elected officials, sets up our government with overreach that could have drastic consequences. Many haven't read the bill, and probably felt that they didn't need to, because, you know, they picked it up in emergencies. Sure, I'll sign off on. So this kind of fits into the pattern in Florida lately of having a solution and looking for a problem. This bill eliminates our home rule, the ability for local governments to make decisions regarding development, such as moratoriums for delayed development. And instead, this allows developers to sue the government. If you ask me, developers have it pretty good here in DeBarry, Volusia County, central Florida for that matter. And they approach local government with building plans that are, they're often approved. They're making plenty of money, and yet it feels like to these, to some of them, it's just not enough. I've seen firsthand some of the new developments here in the city being built, specifically on the south side. And from an aesthetic standpoint, I don't really care too much for them, and some locations I question the need to build there. I realize it's a difficult task to strike a balance between preserving natural landscape and allowing for building. I also realize that your powers are limited, since property rights here in Florida really encourage development. On the other hand, I do appreciate the deliberate and methodical approach that has been taken by this commission regarding large-scale development projects. I was going to start with Volusia County Council, but it seems like they've made up their mind, as you can see there. They don't want to repeal SB 180. They just want to amend it. That doesn't go far enough. This has to be repealed. Some of the arguments I've heard for this bill are, well, we don't want to hurt our working relationship with the state, or it'll cost jobs, people will lose money. The state just told you what they think of you. They don't think you can make smart decisions regarding building or rebuilding. The decision where people can and can't build isn't yours anymore. And if the city objects, well, you could be dragged into court. The other argument is, you know, people are going to lose money. Well, it was business as usual before. It will be business as usual without SB 180, or when SB 180 is repealed. So to be clear, this is not a Republican or Democratic issue. This goes across party lines. And why? Because home rule is the law, and we have rights. Just laying down and doing nothing will make things worse. And you have to wonder, what's coming next? Governor DeSantis and his doge bags, as we speak, are looking for ways to force cities and municipalities to collect and spend taxes how they see fit. Why do we have elections for city council if the governor is telling people how to do their job? Okay? I ask that you not only vote to fight this bill, but seriously consider taking it a step further and joining the class action lawsuit that other cities have... and joining the class action lawsuit that other cities have already signed on. Because it says October 27th. But if there's another storm, it starts all over again. This is never going to end, okay?
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Sell, questions or comments?
I'm going to be all over the place. So there are sixteen cities in Volusia County alone, and twenty-one cities total in the state of Florida have gotten on board to divvy up the 10K. I do understand your local rule, every year it's being eroded. I will give you a good example on what this bill was actually cut out and made for, was the fires in Los Angeles. Thousands of homes burnt down. You know how many permits they've given back out to rebuild? Right now, within the past two weeks? One hundred. One hundred. Because they're demanding them, I had a septic tank when the house burned down, well, that's no longer any good. We need you to do this now, you got to hook up the city sewer. I can't afford to do that, too bad. We'll buy your property, though. That is what that was for, intentionally. It was probably, an unpopular opinion of mine, a decent bill, but just like a butter knife, which is used to put peanut butter and butter on a piece of bread, in the wrong hands, it's a weapon. So I feel this had decent intentions at one point in time, but it's now going to be used as a weapon against us as well. There's something to be said for solidarity. If I could get sixty or seventy percent of the cities in Florida to get on board and put the 10K in and fight this, I would say yes, we need to get in it, just because, for solidarity reasons. But I think it's probably less than ten percent of the cities have gotten behind this, for whatever reason. Because I'm a small-scale politician, I know some of the bigger fish, and I think petty politics probably could play a big part. Just because I know some of them, I know how it would go, you know? I mean, it could get to somebody's desk, and they're like, DeBarry, did they file, well, put the 10K in? Yes, red pen. I know that's what a lot of people are afraid of. I still would get on board with putting the 10K in if more than sixty or seventy percent of the cities got behind it. I don't think it would be, I don't know, wasted money. There's a fine line between being stupid and being brave. Sometimes that line gets blurred. I wouldn't have any issue with putting that 10K in myself if there was more people by now that got in it and got behind it. The minimum we can do is send a letter, I guess, and say, yeah, we've done all the right things the last five years, sorry about your bad luck, but here's a letter explaining that, you know, good luck. I don't even know what the letter does, to be honest with you. It just says, yeah, we're here, we support you, but we're not going to put in the 10K. I don't, that's kind of insulting, I guess.
The letter is for the council's verbiage, not the lawsuit. County council's verbiage.
The same ones that have already turned down putting the lawsuit in.
Just making sure you don't, not complaining.
They haven't even put their toe in the water. So, yeah. The bill, like I said, I think it had some good intentions, but it's going to be used against us. I don't like that. I don't care if you're Democrat or Republican, but the more you take away local rule, the harder it is for us. And you're right, soon we won't need to have elections. I mean, we could just show up twice, twice a year maybe, do the budget, and go home, and let the state of Tallahassee run the city of DeBarry, basically, because they've tied our hands behind our back for just about everything. I agree with that as well. I won't, I won't be voting to put the 10K in. I don't even know if this is going to get amended next year to where it finally tunes it to the way we want it. I just see where things are, where the pendulum's swinging. I don't know if you've noticed, they'll put up a hundred apartment complexes in Sanford, and they're all filled. A developer won't invest any money anywhere if he doesn't know he's going to be able to sell those homes or those apartments. Florida's popular, it's crazy popular. I don't know where all the people are coming from, but every time I see an apartment complex go up, the day it opens, there's cars in the parking lot already. There's lights on, there's people living in there. It's unbelievable, I've never seen anything like it. And to your fact about development, I'm friends with a small-time developer. And before I moved here, there's folks that owned all that land down there. They've owned it for fifty, sixty years. They've been waiting on their little lottery to come in. And wah-wah come along and say, I'll give you five million for that ten acres. You know what? Sold. You can have it. And that's what we're experiencing now. All these folks that have been here for a long time, have owned some property and land. They might have had orange groves on it. Claremont used to be orange groves, as far as the sight can see. Now it's apartments and homes. It's, I've never seen anything like it. I don't know where the, I mean, I know we're past the tipping point, but they're not going to stop building until people stop buying. And I know it's not a popular opinion for you, but that's my take on things.
Councilmember Papalardo?
Thank you. So I'm trying to weigh the political reservoir. I'm not convinced that joining the lawsuit is DeBarry's best route. I don't think the case is very strong, especially not to repeal the legislation. I'm not convinced that they've done anything unconstitutional yet. Pretty sure, I imagine it'll get hung up for a while, but I don't think there's a winning path through the courts. Mr. Dupuy, thank you for your comments. I share a lot of the concern, I really do. However, I love the one point you made, the risk of the abolition of ad valorem tax. Very risky, very dangerous, and we will really desperately need that political reservoir when that battle comes around. If you look at our budget that we just passed tonight, what timing? About eleven million dollars would be struck from it. We would basically have to cut seventy-five percent of staff, reduce law enforcement down to maybe two deputies. We'd have to try to sell the new firehouse. We'd be in a lot of trouble. There's simply not the revenue path to get out of the way of losing ad valorem taxes.
For the benefit of the audience, could you remind them how many employees we have that we'd have to add?
We have the forty-six?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight.
We have the skinniest staff of anybody around.
So three-quarters of forty-eight is thirty-six. We'd be down to twelve. That's, that's an estimate. Yeah, so I think the letter of support sounds like not the strongest of positions.
Did you, did you review the language change they want, which is mainly a one word?
No, I might be missing it.
Okay.
It's on their, it's on their, on their PowerPoint, page seventeen, I believe, or page nine, I'm sorry, of their PowerPoint.
Looking for it, sorry.
Yeah. It is to strike and say enforce instead of, I believe enforce is the word that they put in.
Can't find their deck, that's okay. Anyway, I don't think we have enough leverage to advocate individually with legislature on this case. I don't think we have a lot of standing. I don't really want to belabor it a lot longer, but that's, that's basically where I stand right now.
Councilmember Stevenson?
I share everybody's concerns with the encroachment on our home rule. Didn't realize before that so few cities had joined in this lawsuit. And I do think that that amplifies our risk as a city. We have had lobbying encounters with our legislature, and we've been very successful with that, with getting grants. I'd be fine with the letter of support to the county, as well as continuing our lobbying efforts in Tallahassee.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Butler?
Thank you, Mayor. I know that the League of Cities, both Florida and Volusia, are not doing anything to back this. They're just being, I mean, Florida's doing more, but Volusia, they decided not to participate, and it's up to every city individually. So I'm, I don't want to, I don't think we should be a part of the lawsuit, I'm not for that at all. Can we negotiate with Volusia County to give us our interlocal agreement, and we'll give them a letter? You know, I mean, I don't think we, I think we have a good lobbyist. Like we said, we've been successful in talking to our senators and our legislative delegates. I'm one that will go talk to anybody I need to, so if we need to go out there, I will. And, you know, it's just one of those things, I mean, I'm not going to belabor it. I don't think we should do anything, what, just go individually, as we've always done.
All right. As we've discussed this evening, DeBarry has very little immediate, direct effect. It is one more instance of the state eroding home rule, which we have championed against new law after new law after new law, and I would predict they'll send us something this year that we won't have even imagined to erode it further. It has been a pattern. What happens generally is, there is a bad actor somewhere in Florida. And that bad actor's actions trigger people in power in Tallahassee to say, we're never letting that happen again. So they implement a law for everybody to shut down things for everybody. So it is, it is frustrating when you're a city that does things responsibly, that you get this continuing drip, drip, drip of erosion of home rule. And that is something that I believe we strongly need to confront as we see it. The lawsuit, I would feel differently if we were in the position that some of our sister cities are. If we had, the second it went into effect July one, received letters from developers we had turned down wanting to sue us because that, we turned down their development, and that's more burdensome, and we were doing it under, under rules that had changed within the exclusion period. In that circumstance, I think that those cities, personal opinion here, are well-advised to chip in. Why? Because I think that the quickest way, personal opinion again, the quickest way to forestall immediate harm would be an injunction. The legislator, the legislature will meet after the first of the year, it'll be early session since it's an election year. And whatever they do or don't do will be known at the end of the session, and then it will go, if it does, to the governor, and then it will be signed, if it's signed, on whatever time schedule the government picks. That is too long for cities that got letters in July. If I were in their position, ten thousand dollars, in my view, and the risk of bad relations with your lobbyists for appropriations this year, you know, you can force, you can have damages to your city far in excess of what the appropriation, which was not a foregone conclusion, might have been. And you have an immediate risk. So I certainly understand this because my personal, they're joining the lawsuit, because my personal opinion is that the quickest way to forestall immediate damage, given the fact that there's no relief for at least six months, would be an injunction. An early win in the court system, which says, hold up, don't enforce it until we hear the legal issues. And perhaps you're right, it doesn't become, it wasn't unconstitutional. Or perhaps they're right, or our gentleman in our audience is right, it is unconstitutional. I don't know. It's certainly something that could be heard in a court, in a court system. I think their best hope would be to get enough mass to get, to champion an injunction so that the legal issues could be heard, because they are facing immediate harm. We were very, very fortunate here to have done, as the city manager noted, acting early and trying to do all of this development that isn't aesthetically pleasing to some in the south of the city, while honoring property rights, which are sacrosanct in Florida, which if we just say no to something so that we feel good in the moment, all the people in the audience that didn't want it, they're happy, and then we're sued, it goes forward, and we spent legal money, that's not a win for the city. It still happens, we just did it to feel good, and we cost the taxpayers a bunch of money getting to the fact that it's going to happen. So we have worked really hard to do things through negotiation, to honor property rights without getting challenged in court, and we have a good track record in doing that. And voluntarily through negotiation, reducing things like density, addressing things like stormwater up front. And because we were that far in, we had a very old land development code. We started the effort years prior to us having a moratorium for six months to work through all the workshops. We completely revamped the code, we went to form-based code, we did all sorts of different things with the code. And the six-month moratorium was up in July, and I remember a meeting when staff said, we want to finish it up in July, and it'll become effective, or the last vote will be in August or something. And I said, I don't want to see the moratorium end without the code being in place. It doesn't make sense to me to have a short gap period where there's a fuzzy thing, where you have something walk in the door, and it's got to be under the old code, and you have the new code done. So the net effect was, we completely completed our rewrite in July of 2024, which means that SB 180 does not affect the changes we have made to the rules in DeBarry. And then this summer, we did what I think some of the other cities should do, and I haven't seen, I haven't watched too closely, but I haven't seen them do, and that is, you don't need to set yourself up to walk into court first. Some of the other jurisdictions got threats of lawsuit within the first week. What we did was, all right, we're going to have an administrative procedure that we will codify. If you believe that you were harmed, or you suffered economic harm from some action or adjustment we did to our rules or code, here is the process through which you address that concern. And it isn't run into the courthouse and file a lawsuit. It's put, put your facts down, submit them to the city manager, they'll review it, sit down and have a confab, you can discuss where you think the harm is, and where the city doesn't see that as harm, or whatever the case may be. And there's a process before anybody runs to the courthouse. And we did that this summer, shortly, it was in August, as I recall, and I think that was on the, one of Carmen's slides, the city manager's slides. We did that in August. So should we have done something, because we do a minor change here or there to our code as we see an issue, if we did something in that window that somebody says, now that was done in that window, and I find that burdensome and it harms me, we put in a process. It's not run to the courthouse, not make big headlines. And so there are ways to manage this risk, which I believe we have done. And in DeBarry, we have some good fortune on our side, in that we were doing all these things early on, methodically, with consultants and workshops and review, and we got our work done prior to all this coming down. We had SB 250, but we did all of our research, and as you can see on the map in front of you, we weren't in the cone. We were not covered under SB 250 because the way the circles from landfall are drawn, we are between two circles. And we were outside the hundred, the hundred-mile range. So I cannot support DeBarry joining the lawsuit while I have great sympathies for those who have. And I understand, because my personal view is, their greatest chance of forestalling immediate harm is an injunction. And the court system is the only way they can seek that. A letter of support to the county. When I reviewed the language changes, it just made some fairly simple forcible changes that do mitigate a good bit of the harm. So I don't personally have a problem with supporting the specific changes that they, they encourage. I think that we have strong ties with Tallahassee through our lobbyists, through our staff, through our organizations. And we have many things on our, on our plate to discuss with them this year, things we'd like to see happen. I think we can express our support for changes to SB 250, particularly those that were shoved in at the last moment and are the most harmful. Many of our legislators claim, like, we only saw it was an emergency bill so people could rebuild their house. Yeah, that's because they shoved all this other stuff in. Yeah, that's because they shoved all this other stuff in the last week, and you didn't see it, so you supported it, but now you know it's flawed. It's good for the emergencies that you thought you were addressing, and now you have to do some work. And we can say that. I am ambivalent whether we send a letter of support to the county, or we advocate individually with the legislature, and whatever the consensus is of the group among those options, I could support either. So having said that, we don't have a clear consensus about a letter of support for the county or not, for their changes. Could I open the discussion up again to see? Councilmember Sell, are you interested in a letter of support for the county changes, which are minimal words in certain sections?
If you all would like to send a letter, you can send the letter.
Okay. How about you, Councilmember Papalardo?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Butlin?
I don't have a problem sending a letter.
Okay. I will sign a letter of support that does not include us actively standing shoulder to shoulder with them to champion their specific language changes, but when I read them, I thought it was a stronger bill if it would have been amended that way. It would be less onerous for cities like ourselves. And I do think that in our discussions with our legislator representatives, that we ought to say, we continue, as we've told you many times before, this is again a case of fixing one problem and punishing everybody, and eroding our home rule in the process, and we have a real problem with that.
And Mayor and Council, the option, you know, their recommendations may not be entirely all the recommendations, there may be some additional recommendations that are better.
People come up with.
And so as the process goes along, certainly we can support their recommendations, but there may be
Other things to discuss.
Other things that we may want to promote individually, and so, and there may be some better solutions than what the counties come up with. So I would recommend doing both, the letter of support, and then also working hard on looking at the bill and see what other improvements need to be made to it.
Okay. So the guidance from the council, I believe, is a consensus to provide a letter of support with no commitment to doing specific things with them, and to advocate individually with the legislature as we do every year. Is that correct? Okay. So we move on to member reports. Councilmember Sell, anything to report?
Tomorrow night, I'll be at Gateway from 6:30 to 8:30. There's cheesecake involved. If you would like to attend, please RSVP, because I will not be sharing my cheesecake.
Councilmember Papalardo?
I will also be attending the DeBarry Foundation kickoff, but not for the whole thing. Friday, there is a plaque dedication at the library.
Correct. 11:00 AM on Friday at the library, yes.
Then, as much as I hate the soapbox, I'll be asking for it tonight. Thank you for your patience. I just feel compelled to make a brief statement here. Last week, we lost a man with a microphone, champion of First Amendment, a man just two years younger than me. He took a different path out of high school, a path that I considered seriously. Charlie Kirk was like a pace setter, a parallel version of myself that I could compare against at each stage of life, as we experienced them almost simultaneously. I remember finding him on YouTube many years ago, back when you can use an ad blocker and skip the really long ads. He leaves behind a wife and two children, each are one year younger than each of my children. This loss has been hard to process. It feels like I witnessed myself die one year in the past, for I too have been called a Nazi, I have been called a fascist, and I was called a racist during my campaign in 2020. All things are certifiably untrue, and I denounce them absolutely. I think about Charlie's children, one and three years old, and I think about what it will be like for Charlie's kids to miss out on their father and their second and fourth years of their life, and for the rest of time. I know what will be missed, because I have been blessed to live that exact year that Charlie is missing right now. When I get home from council tonight, my four-year-old Luke is going to run up to me and say, missed you, Dad, love you, Dad, like he always does. I'm going to pause, and I'll feel the wind knocked out of me, like I have every time given me a big hug this past week. And I'll tell him, I love you, buddy, I missed you too. This is why tonight I am wearing a Blueberry lapel pin. Last Friday, Erica Kirk, Charlie's widow, told us this painful exchange with her toddler. When I got home last night, Gigi, our daughter, ran into my arms, and I talked to her, and she said, Mommy, I missed you. I said, I missed you too, baby. She goes, first daddy, what do you tell a three-year-old? I said, baby, daddy loves you so much. Don't you worry, he's on a work trip with Jesus, so he can afford your Blueberry budget. As much as those words dig into my heart, it reminds me that I serve on this dais for a higher purpose. I weigh heavily the near and long-term future that we laid before, our families of DeBarry, and how important it is that we make the best decisions so that fathers in our town can continue to bring home the blueberries for our children. God bless Charlie Kirk, God bless the Kirk family, and God bless America. Thank you.
Councilmember Stevenson?
Thank you for those kind words. You moved me, and I just hope that everybody can continue to condemn violence, political violence, as well as all the other violence that happens in our communities and in our schools. Too many innocent lives are being lost, and we need healing and unity in our communities. I will also be joining you guys tomorrow and Friday for our events. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Butlin?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the roundtable on Monday with Mayor and Carmen and Shari, and it's always interesting to go to those things and hear the topics that they have, and it was definitely interesting with the school board superintendent there and all that. I also attended the CFO Blaze Angola Awards to the fire department in Lake Mary. He gave away lots of money to these individual units, and we are not on that list, but we can apply again in a year, I believe. Shari said that we were locked out of that two-year gap. And I will also be attending all the future events coming up. Yep, that's it.
So I will be at the library on Friday at 11:00 to honor the Lombardis, and there are many contributions to the success of DeBarry Library, as well as tomorrow evening at Gateway Center for the Arts, where we will celebrate the inauguration of DeBarry Foundation. And as Councilmember Sell said, there's an RSVP, it's a free event, but they'd like to know how many cheesecakes to get. I was at TPO today. We did a lot of normal, long-range planning, which sometimes feels very bureaucratic, but we had a lot of good interchange as well about transportation issues. And I went as well to the state CFO event in Lake Mary for the distribution of the grants to fire departments. Even though Orange City was not an awardee this year, they've gotten awards in the past in two different years, and will be eligible to apply again this coming year. And it was, I think, good to be seen in a broader group of cities as showing an interest in our firefighters and their protection from cancer. City manager?
Yes, Mayor. You had requested, you had some inquiries regarding what the city has done since Milton?
Yes.
And
This was a citizen request. They're like, what is happening on the west emergency system? It seems like nothing's happening. And I explained that many things are happening, but they happen behind the scenes, and you don't see them. So I asked the city manager to do a quick update during reports so that everyone would hear the same information, and it wouldn't be just one version taken to one individual or two individuals who then translate it to other people, which is a recipe for confusion.
So I'll provide a quick presentation here regarding what we've done since the hurricane Milton, what some of our strategies have been to try to overcome some of the situations that we had during Milton. We've had some inquiries regarding Quail Lake. We'll go over some of those of Quail Lake. They want us to obviously lower the level of Quail Lake, so we'll go over that as well. So those are the things that have been happening since Hurricane Milton. So our east side strategies, again, this is our western, this is our emergency management system, obviously where our stormwater fees goes towards. Since Hurricane Milton, you'll see there in the red circle there, we have completed in June of 2025, before hurricane season, this hurricane season, the pumping station at James Pond, and that's ready to go and fully functional. Also, we have applied for a $800,000 grant with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, and it's to update the Bill Keller Pumping Station. That station is over 30 years old, and it needs to be rebuilt, not only with the pumps, but also the electrical components in that particular building. Also, to change the irrigation water source for Bill Keller Park from the Aquifer pump to drawing the water out of Lake Charles. That has been a requirement that we need to get done. And also the East High Banks drainage along East High Banks in front of residential building supply, being able to capture that water and move it to the James Pond Pumping Station. And so we have applied for an $800,000 grant. Those have been permitted and ready to go, and we're just waiting for the dollars to be able to do those. And so in our budget, our stormwater budget, we do have the matching funds for this grant. And so we were going to do that with the regular funds, but we decided to do the grant. And so hopefully, we'll get this particular grant and get these executed. But we've been working on other strategies that maybe doesn't necessarily cost money to do, and then that's to, one, on this east side, is to alleviate some of the flooding at Alexander Woods Drive. As you know, Gas Line Lake there, in my presentation we did in November 2024, has an overflow into the retention pond at Enterprise Road. And then retention pond then overflows back behind Alexander Woods, and it creates the flooding back there. So we found, obviously, an old pipe that exists that has been abandoned by the county, and it goes right up to the retention pond on Enterprise Road. We did fix the end so that we can hook up to that particular abandoned pipe. It is, we tested it, and it is functional. And so one of our strategies with the county is to go ahead and proactively pump down the Enterprise Pond, so it doesn't overflow so much back into the Alexander Woods. So it is a strategy that we're going to deploy. So not only are we working on new infrastructure to try to improve our emergency management system, but we're also trying to change some of our strategies to be able to alleviate some of that flooding, and then proactively move that water down to the I-4 corridor to where it goes out to Lake Monroe. And so it's an abandoned pipe, it hasn't been used, but we fixed the end, and we can pump it proactively to prevent the flooding of that water going outside of the Enterprise Retention Pond back into Alexander Woods Drive. Also, just to refresh folks' memory, the properties in purple, the properties that we were talking about, that we preserved by buying the property on Palm Drive, and also buying the property on Dirksen, both of those have our stormwater systems running through them, and we've prevented the development for those particular properties so that we can maintain and enhance our stormwater system in the future. So the west side strategies, I do want to go back over again, this is a slide that we had in November 2024. This is DeBarry Plantation, DeBarry Plantation. I just want to use this diagram to show the elevations of the entrance of DeBarry Plantation. The entrance at DeBarry Plantation is at 43 feet. Right there at DeBarry Plantation Boulevard and Beacon Club is 37 feet. So if you come to that particular intersection, I tell folks all the time, when you pull up to that red light, please look to the right and please look to the left. You'll see the incline, as Saxon Boulevard is 88 feet, and Pine Meadows is 57 feet. And there's, over there on the far right-hand side, Pine Meadows Boulevard is at 80 feet. Even in the Big Golf and Country Club, the clubhouse is at 76 feet. And everything around that front entrance, and that front entrance is actually in a bowl. Now, I don't have any idea why it was designed that way, because it was done before we were a city, but the entrance is in a bowl, and so everything goes towards that front. I wanted to bring, because we had a lot of questions regarding our western, west side emergency flood management system. That's the area in orange, let me go back up here. The area in orange up here in the western management system in orange, that's the west side emergency management flood system, flood management system. And so obviously, it takes the water in the northern part of DeBarry, it goes into the front of DeBarry Plantation, and also into the pond across the street, and we pump it out all the way to the Borough Pit in the southwest part of the city, and that's all in orange, and that's the west side emergency flood management system. And so this is actually the front cover of the permit, permitted engineering plans. And as you can see, Milla Lake is involved in the permit of the west side emergency flood management system, as well as Lake Susan going down to DeBarry Plantation, and then all the way pumping it all the way to the Borough Pit in southwest DeBarry. This was the plan, and this was permitted by St. John's Water Management District, and this is the cover of the entire engineering plans for this particular project. As part of that particular project, if you're going to pump water out of a particular location, you have to have this agreement. So this project wouldn't have occurred unless this agreement was created. And this is the agreement for FDOT and the city to put water in the front retention pond, or the front pond at DeBarry Plantation. It's assigned rights, it's a three-party agreement, signed by the HOA, it's signed by the city and the FDOT to allow all the water to be put in this location to be pumped out to the Borough Pit. Now, we tried to make some amendments. Obviously, the FDOT has a right to pump water into the DeBarry Plantation Pond, but they also have an obligation to communicate it, which they did not. We drafted a memorandum of understanding, we sent it to FDOT, they are not willing to sign the authority over to the city, meaning the authority is that the city manager makes the decision of when they should pump and when they should not. As you know, capacity is an issue, and obviously FDOT is concerned about flooding folks at Milla Lake, but they also should be concerned about flooding folks at DeBarry Plantation. We wanted that particular authority to be able to say yes or no because of those capacity issues. They have yet to sign this memorandum of understanding, giving the city and the city manager the authority to say yes or no. So however, they have been diligent. They do communicate with us in advance of when they're going to turn the pumps on and off at the Milla Lake Retention Pond. And so they have been doing that, they've been following our orders and saying, look, you need to communicate with us, we'll tell you where we have capacity. Unfortunately, they don't want to sign an agreement to give it that authority, they want to be able to just go ahead and operate, and they have been. We get a communication, hey, we need to pump the retention pond, you know, we got capacity, just letting you know. And if I have capacity issues, then my intention is to respond back, you can't pump down here, and we'll see if they comply. But again, they're trying to balance, and they're trying to balance between the folks at Milla Lake and folks at DeBarry Plantation. But there is an agreement, and a lot of folks in DeBarry Plantation don't understand that there's actually an agreement for the city and FDOT to put water in that front pond for us to be able to pump it out. That's how the western, west side emergency management system works. We draw water out of that particular lake. So this is a little bit, a little map of our strategies that we've been working on. We've met with the county, we've met with FDOT together in the same room, trying to determine what we can do with Milla Lake. And as you can see, the yellow line that goes from Milla Lake all the way down to DeBarry Plantation, that's the force main that currently exists to where they can pump down into the front pond. That's the force main all the way down there. You saw it on the permit for the engineered plans. The orange that you see there is the western management system there in orange. And so one of our strategies we've been talking about, obviously, is how do we bypass DeBarry Plantation and move it in a direction where there's very little housing? And so what we did was, is we went ahead and applied, one of our last major projects is the West High Banks Stormwater System, and we applied to transform 386 for $8.6 million to build the West High Banks Stormwater System. And then working with the county and FDOT, obviously, they're thinking about putting a pumping station there to manage the level of Milla Lake. As you know, we have benchmarked ourselves with other communities, they are now benchmarking against us because we have pumping stations that manage the level of the lakes, and for some unknown reason, they haven't gotten on board with managing levels of lakes and moving water to Borough Pit. managing levels of lakes and moving water to a burrow pit. If you've been in some of the emergency management meetings, I always talk about, if you want to solve your flooding issues, build a burrow pit. And so, so one of the options, obviously, the county and the FDOT is talking about is moving the water directly to the St. John's River, which is going to be extremely difficult. St. John just doesn't allow that to occur. But the other part, working with FDOT, is to move it to the railroad track and then down to possibly the West High Banks. Once it's built, they theoretically could connect the West High Banks, and that already has a permit to take that water to the river and tie in there, or to take it down to the burrow pit, which we had capacity issues last year. Now, FDOT said that we may want to think about creating an overflow for you at the burrow pit. And so I did get a quote regarding engineering to build an overflow for the burrow pit all the way down to the retention pond, FDOT's retention pond across from Sunrail Station. Just the platform with, and that water line there, it's $300,000 for that engineering for that particular project. We sent it to FDOT. They have not responded on whether or not they want to do the engineering for that particular project. It probably another million dollars for, to construct that platform and take that force main all the way down the railroad right away, all the way to the FDOT pond across the street from the Sunrail Station. So these are the things that we've been working on to try to create an alternative route. Rather than the front entrance of DeBery Plantation, let's take it around the back where there's less population, and then utilize the West High Banks permit that takes the water to the river and use it that direction. So these are some of the options we've been working on, but the main focus is, we have applied for the $8.6 million to build the West High Banks system, which gives the opportunity for a regional project, which involves Milla Lake and maybe some other areas as well. But again, the focus is, let's move the water away from the Berry Plantation entrance, and let's send it to a different direction. Unfortunately, you know, when you build infrastructure, it takes multiple years of getting it in. You got permitting, you got engineering, and you got funding. All those take multiple years. We're working on it to try to take it to a different direction. Let's talk about the Quail Lake strategies after Milton, and we've been getting some inquiries about lowering Quail Lake, and there's some issues there at Quail Lake, and I'll go over them a little bit. But on May 22nd, 2025, we received a demand letter, basically an email from the HOA's attorney, demanding us to lower the Quail Lake by pumping more water out, and basically threatening the city of negligence if we don't do so. So the city responded, and we responded five days later. We provided the St. John's Water Management District permits for the west side system. And in those permits, there are lake level designations of when you can turn the pump on and when you can turn the pump off, and those are the St. John's Water Management District permits that we have to comply. All our pump stations, infrastructures are set to these levels. All our pumps are set to these levels, and I just want everybody to know that we do measure every lake every week in the city of DeBery, so we know what the lake levels are. Are the DeBery Plantation Community Association's responsibilities for Quail Lake, they are the owner and maintenance entity for Quail Lake subdivision. We put that in our letter to the subdivision, to the HOA and to the residents. DeBery Plantation Community Association is the partial owner of Quail Lake and its retention ponds. Those retention ponds are located on their property, and so is Quail Lake. We did locate St. John's Water Management District. There's a long history with retention ponds there at Quail Lake. On the backside, I'll show you some maps here in a minute, going back as far as February 2020 and February 2023, where St. John's notified them directly. And why do they notify them directly? Because they're the owner and maintenance entity of the system failure regarding the retention pond back there. And then, obviously, St. John's Water Management District, working on the DPCA issue, did field visits on the entire subdivision. They had, did a field visit for this particular retention pond, and in May 2025, they still confirmed that there's a system failure still exists at this retention pond at Quail Lake. So this is, this is the west side emergency management system permit. We are, as you can see there in blue, the final operation and maintenance entity. And you can see on the right-hand side in one of the paragraph threes, that these are the five lakes that are involved in the west side emergency management system. Quail Lake, the pump on and pump off is 42.5 feet and 41 feet. We can't turn the pump on until 41 feet. As you can see, the inlet, when we got that particular email from the attorney demanding us to lower the lake, we went out and took pictures. This is the lake level, and again, our inlet is set at 41 feet. And you can see the gauge, the gauge, the water is not even registered on the gauge. It's less than, yeah, less than 41 feet. And on the very bottom down there is our measurements for each Quail Lake. On October 25th, it was at 41.3 feet, but since October 25th, and the reason why you see blue there, it hasn't even registered 41 feet since October 2025. So it has been below 41 feet ever since. And so our pumps have not been turning on, other than when we test them and they're for maintenance, but other than that, that lake level has not been at 41 feet since the hurricane. Obviously, this is one of my slides in November 2024. This obviously shows the DeBery Plantation Community Association on the right-hand side is their document, and it shows clearly that they're the operation and maintenance entity for Quail Lake subdivision, and we identified the maintenance issues that occur in the overflow of the retention pond because of the lack of maintenance over there as well. I did want to show this because it was in our letter that we sent to the residents there. The Articles of Incorporation for the HOA, and it was in our letter, I did reference that, you can look it up on SunBiz, but I decided to go ahead and show them that really the purposes and the powers of the association, and I got a little star there by paragraph three, is that the association shall have the duty to operate, maintain, and manage the surface and stormwater management systems in a manner consistent with the St. John's Water Management District permit, which is the permit for Unit 13, and the requirements applicable to the district rules and shall assist in the enforcement of the restriction and covenants contained herein. And next paragraph even gives them the right to assess people to make sure that they operate and maintenance repairs. So what I had put in the letter that I sent to the residents, this is the Articles of Incorporation. It clearly identifies the purpose of the homeowners association, the DeBery 13, Unit 13 Homeowners Association, which is a sub-association of the master. But then, the covenants that was amended at that particular time, the duties of the association, the Unit 13 Association shall be responsible through the master association for the maintenance, operation, and repair of the surface water and stormwater management system. These documents were approved by St. John's Water Management District. That's why you see the document on the right show them as the operation and maintenance So when you look back at the retention pond in the back, the retention pond in the back is supposed to be a dry pond. It's never, it's never been a dry pond, and the grate and the filter and the overflow in that particular pond is an issue, that it flows into Quail Lake. And so I look back in the St. John's Water Management District records, there's letters going, dating back to February 28, 2020, identifying, sent to the HOA, responding that the dry pond, retention pond is not recovering in 72 hours. All dry ponds are required to be recovered in 72 hours. This pond is not. It stays wet continuously, and there's issues with the grate being at the wrong elevation. I think they fixed the elevation, but the maintenance, since they fixed the elevation, has not been very good. But that's the retention pond in the back. It has not been working very well. That retention pond is supposed to be built at 39 feet. Well, 39 feet is below the water table, and that's why it stays wet all the time. And I'll show you why. And when I talked about the maintenance issues in red down there in the bottom left, that's the overflow of the retention pond with the picture that you saw prior. But this is the letter February 15, 2023, another letter sent to the St. John's, excuse me, to the DeBery Plantation Community Association, again, talking about the same pond that is not recovering, it's not a dry pond, and that the grates, repairs and replacement of the grates and inlet grates are dislodged and not working. Up in the upper right, you can see the arrows there, but you can see that the confirmation by St. John's Water Management District, May 2025, they got out of vehicles, they walked this particular pond, they went over to the overflow structure and the grates, and they're broken and not working. And it's still a continuous issue even after five years. The pond is wet. He was very clear, that's supposed to be a dry pond. But I also put some other document, other language out of the RCE's consultants that was dated 4/6/24, and this is what really concerns us regarding the level of the lake and our pump on, pump off, is that additional review of the GEC's geotechnical report indicates that the water table is at 40 feet, 40.65 feet, and the seasonal high groundwater table is at 41.65 feet. And so with the retention pond is supposed to be at 39 feet, that's why it holds water all the time, and it reduces the capacity of that retention pond when it's constantly filled with water. The other factor is, is that if the water table's at 40.65 feet and our pump on is at 41 feet, inlet's at 41 feet, how much lower can you make our inlet before we start pumping water table? And that's a big factor. So the, the question is, okay, can the city go get, lower the water table while our permit says at 41 feet? You would have a significant amount of geotechnical study that has to be done. I believe that's the responsibility to Berry Plantation Committee Association. They're the owner and maintenance of the subdivision. They are the owners of Quail Lake, and I think until the issue with the retention pond is resolved, any movement towards trying to get this, that permit lowered, particularly when the water table's at 40.65 feet, based upon the RCE's consultant and the GEC geotechnical study, it makes it very difficult to lower that because you just can't pump water table. You'd be pumping 24/7 forever. And so that's, these are some of the issues we've been dealing with since Hurricane Milton, both of trying to put strategies in place to make sure that we're more efficient in handling the high water and to be able to also put in new infrastructure in our western, in our emergency management system. The $800,000 grant, if we do get it from FDEP, will go a long way on the east side. And if the strategies do come to fruition on the west side, it's going to take several years to get that done, and we're dependent on other governments. If they, if they decide to put the pumping station at Milla Lake to control the level of the lake, there are options to do that, and I think High Banks can play a big part in that and become a regional, part of the regional plan. But again, our focus is to, is to really to market, to try to move the water in the direction opposite of the front of DeBery Plantation. But we'll see where it goes. A lot depends on these other governments, funding, permitting, and everything else, but we'll see. That's been our strategy, and that's what we've been trying to work on, Mayor.
Thank you. City Attorney, do you have anything to report?
No report tonight.
We stand adjourned.